Six P M. Just for a matter of housekeeping, if you would like to ask a question, you'll see a marker up here on the floor. If you'd step forward to the marker, give us your name and your address and your question, we will proceed from there. Largely, this is for the benefit of all of you, so that we can answer whatever questions you have to the best of our ability. So whoever's got the first question, please step forward and...
Great. So, I'm sorry. Leslie from six one six up Hudson Street. So, I went through Facebook today, and I went through Roman Lunch, right? And I went through all these questions, comments, and concerns to see what people in the community have, so I can ask tonight those. So, the first question I found is, what deficit, if any, are we fixing? Are we planning to fix with this tax increase, if it passes?
Could you repeat the question after you said that we had to...
As I understand, how are we going to use the money and what holes are we patching, so to speak? Certainly, the board ultimately would, I mean, finance develops the budget, but I think, one of the things I think of is when you look at our law enforcement program and making sure that we have consistent staffing, we need to make sure that our salaries and benefits are consistent with the rest of Eastern Jackson County. Cost is about twenty thousand dollars each time we lose an officer. And so, if we can mitigate that turnover, we're helping hang on to the money just to not losing productivity and having to constantly be trained. But also, when we look at benefits and compensation models, that would also be something that would affect the rest of the employees. But by now, I think that if you look at the graphs and stuff that Joe put out there, the lion's share of that general fund is going to law enforcement.
Right. So, then I guess my next question kind of bounces off that. Current expenses, which departments need the additional funding the most?
I think just the city administration and the law enforcement. I mean, the others are somewhat self-sustaining through their own revenue streams, through water sewer, public works, and funded off of that largely, but the folks here at the city hall and then obviously law enforcement.
And so, am I okay to ask a couple more? Am I good?
Sure, they're three dollars a piece.
I'll write the check. So, are there any specific projects or items that have had to be bypassed because of lack of funding?
I don't think, you know, Jimmy has been here as long as I have, longer, but I can't think anything directly. And the big thing about this is, this one percent is generated around two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, it isn't going to be, when you look at what the cost to build a new sewer plant, or you pay every street in town, it's not going to patch those holes, but it is going to allow us to make sure that we're freeing up some of the restricted funds. Because right now, we're using, you know, water sewers helping to pay some of public works, streets is helping to pay some of public works. If we can pull all those salaries back into the general administration, then that allows all the money that's in those funds to be used for what they're, what we'd like to use them for. By statute, we need like seven and a half percent of the money out of each of those funds, and I think parks is ten percent. But we'd like to make sure that all the money that's coming in for parks is going for parks, all the money that's coming in for streets is going for streets, and not have to use that for personal costs.
One more thing. It's been about forty years since we've had a real estate tax increase. And each time we proposed that, it's never passed. This tax is an opportunity for anyone who shops, whether they rent or pay tax, or, I mean, or own a home, they get a chance to participate in the sales tax. The average person, I don't know what their grocery bills or whatever are, but if it's a thousand dollars a year, they pay ten dollars and there's extra money in tax. If it's five thousand, of course, it's fifty dollars. If you go to Independence, Blue Springs, Green Valley, you're already paying that, so you might as well help the folks here in your own city to increase the revenues here. The size of this, the size of our workforce here probably has doubled since I've been here since seventy-one. And you have benefits, you have salary increases, yet we're still working off numbers of nineteen seventy-nine.
Well, I think the people, if they understand that, that maybe they would be a little bit more accepting. I know the biggest complaints I saw is everybody's upset about their streets and sewers and drains. I mean, I came down and spoke with Joe on Friday, South Hudson is going to be six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to fix. The money's not in the account. It's not, I mean, it's lighting off on the Lake City Valley right now. That's not your guys' fault. This has been a problem since I've lived here for thirteen years that has been brought up and it just hasn't been fixed because the money's never been there, or other things have been priorities. So, if people understand how the budget works or how this is going to work, then maybe they'll see that this would allow for South Central, South Hudson, and Jefferson to be fixed eventually.
To bounce off of what the mayor was saying, when that extra money that passed would come in, we'll be able to take that money that we're pulling from the other account, you know, to pay employees and whatnot. We'd be able to take it and actually use it for the streets. Like you said, South Hudson, it's not going to be fixed in a day, but there might be some things we can do that's going to help with a lot. Because I know, I live for Ange over in our area too, is, you know, poor and he's attentive, so.
Okay. So, this is my last one, and it goes with signs. I know you guys have a money issue with the signs. I know that it was a set of signs. And so, as part of that money, that's worth checking out. If the money's freed up, it will go towards animal control, like, those are things, I'm just assuming they're broadening.
Yeah, I think like code enforcement, I mean, that's some of the stuff that we've talked about at the last council meeting. In fact, I haven't had a chance to bring this up to the council, but I was reading, I think it was in Kansas City, that the judge that's over that has set up kind of a remediation fund. And I would like to look at putting maybe ten thousand dollars into a fund that if you means test the individual and say there's a ninety-year-old person lives next door to me that's living on a thousand dollars a month and their house is just decaying because they can't keep it up. If we could use some of that to go out there and, you know, fix the garage door. I know Mark and I walked a part of Ward Three on Saturday, and there was garage doors, there was just, I think, said, just junk piled. And some of those folks, you know, I don't think want to live that way. They just want to go forward and they can't get rid of some of the stuff. But then if we have fines that people like, take those fines and use those to replenish the funds. But yeah, that's something up front, but I think that's a way to help. People ask about keeping their neighborhoods looking good. And obviously, the folks that are, you know, if my yard is growing up and stuff's in there, then, you know, buying me, making, clean it up. If we have somebody that's making a good, big effort, has been, that wants help, and we can help them, to use some of this to help kind of clean up the neighborhoods. And that helps support everybody else's property values and in turn, to help flow back through on the property tax side.
Well, I think code enforcement acting is scary, because, I mean, I, again, I live in Ward Three, so I know my neighbors were huge issue that Joe had dealt with this summer. So, I, I mean, appreciate that, because I shouldn't have to live that way because somebody else...
Right. And if we can certainly put assessments on their property, but if they don't sell the property, it just keeps sitting there and rolling and rolling, and maybe forty years from now, the city gets something. But right now, it doesn't help us.
So, I think that's all my questions.
Okay.
So, anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Compton, Neil Childs Row. Is that it?
That's it.
Don't say that.
We've met before.
I hear you. First of all, I'd like to ask if the Board of Alderman, if we have a hundred percent bounty of this one percent sales tax?
I, you know, I can't say. I don't suspect that we do, but I don't want to speak for other votes.
Okay. You haven't already voted on this as a board?
Oh, we voted, put it on the ballot, yes.
You voted, was that a hundred percent?
No, it was not.
It was not?
So, I'll speak for myself. I was one of the noes.
Okay. So, what do you have against Buckner?
I don't have anything against Buckner.
Okay.
So, my concern wasn't so much whether or not we needed it. My concern was, because I know we need it, my concern was, it was being asked for the third time in a row. That was my concern. We kept asking the same question until we get the answer that we want. So, it wasn't, it was more of a philosophical concern than whether or not we needed it.
And you don't think that might have been just a communication problem on number one and number two? It could have been a communication problem, and we didn't have something like this, because people didn't understand. Now, I just found out tonight that our sales tax is seven point four percent, and out of that, Buckner gets one percent. If everybody is as dumb as I am, they probably thought that we get the whole thing. Now, tonight is the first time I knew, that I remember, that we only get one percent of the whole sales tax.
Let me clarify. The general fund gets one percent, and there's a half percent that goes to the capital improvement fund, and a half percent that goes to transportation. But the general fund gets one percent.
Okay. So, then we actually get two percent?
Yes.
Okay. And this next one percent, then you will get all of that?
It will all go into the...
Will it all go into the general fund?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry that you all could not be in agreement on something that has been so long overdue. That disappoints me. I don't even know who you are. But it disappoints me that our own board could not be in agreement for one percent. We're going to spend that at, like you just said, Costco or Blue Springs or something like that. And to me, the sales tax is the fairest path that we have. So, I think that's all I have.
I'll speak. I was the other no vote.
You were the other no vote? Okay, I don't know you either.
Ben Ross, Ward Three.
How do you...
Ben Ross, Ward Three.
Ben Ross, Ward Three?
Yep, that's the word I...
Then that's Neeta.
Okay.
And my no vote, my no vote was mainly because I didn't think this was the right election to put it on, how big it is, people, there's going to be a big turnout. And traditionally, this is probably a more Republican-leaning area, which don't like taxes as well. I thought if we waited till the spring, it would have a much better chance of passing. So, that's why I was the no vote.
Well, I'd say that...
Those two fellows who've always been against it, from them getting on the board, was not in favor of it to begin with.
I'm sorry. Say it again, Jim.
These two individuals were not in support of it before they even got to the board.
Oh.
This is nothing new.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry for that, Jim. But I, you know, well, I'd say if it doesn't pass this time, then we go for number four.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Appreciate it.
And then make sure that we get the communication out. So, I appreciate our law enforcement. I appreciate our mayor. I appreciate all, well, I appreciate the system. But I would like to see a little more forward thinking.
Well, and it was, and I don't want to apologize here. I know these guys might be getting a little beat up over this, but, but in fairness, I think, there was a group of folks that were worried about past transgressions. I don't, I don't believe those things actually happened, but we were investigated by the FBI, we were audited by the state, and no Maltesans was found. But I think having these two gentlemen on the board, nobody's going to say, this is a good old boys' club, that everybody's just got everybody's back and be us in their way through something. I think if I get off on the wrong path, or any of the other people get off on the path, it's going to be reported. It's not going to be silently swept under the rug. So, if you're worried about how your money's going to be spent going forward, two-thirds of the board is all that's left of, quote, the old board, Jimmy and Rubin, and I don't think, and they didn't do anything wrong either. But, but I think there's, Ben's on the finance committee, so he's right there where the sausage is being made when it comes to how we're spending our money. And I, you know, I don't think that I'm going to be able to muzzle him, but he might get off the straight narrow. So, hopefully, folks would, you know, if they had any concerns about what happened in the past, and again, I don't, all the investigation and stuff that was done, there was nothing found to be improper. But the good news is, I think, going forward is that you essentially have two, for lack of better terms, watchdogs on the board. So, hopefully, you can relax going forward to knowing that what we say we're going to do, there's going to be, not only are the voters going to hold us accountable, but there's also people on the board watching that are going to be hollering, hey, this isn't what you said, or...
Okay. Well, I am a believer in healthy opposition. I'm a believer in healthy opposition, so that's okay. And I hadn't even thought about any of the prior rumors. And so, all I wanted to know was where we stood on the board and if we supported Buckner.
Yeah. And I don't want to question, I don't question anybody on this board's commitment to making our community better. I think we all just have different visions at different times. And, and like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus here. We're all, we all want the town to be better. And just like Ben said, I feel, politically speaking, I can't totally argue with him, and I see Mark's point too. But I, but I also see that, you know, my back, a long time ago, I worked in sales, and my boss used to, every night, he'd walk in the door, you can't make a sale if you don't make the call. So, you got to put it out there and let people tell you what they want. And as information continues to involve, they evolve, and we get more and more of the message out there. Hopefully, there's somebody tonight that'll watch this video on YouTube or what have you, and they'll say, oh, I didn't even know that. And we can start to change some minds, change some hearts, and move our city forward.
I hope so. We like South Hudson.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I encourage everyone, if you, people don't know how to watch this video, get it out there. Tell people.
Thanks, Chuck. Here's another one on one-three-clip drive. You've been talking about transgressions and stuff. I'm numb about one of the things that's special about elections in the U.S. And I participate in the conversation, but I'm reading the structure. And kind of like the old thing, you know, I'd rather, you know, I'd rather they finger stupid than I have a little remark. And a lot of people are talking about the, those past transgressions and the fact that this one percent is going to the general fund. Their thought, when you hear the term "general fund," is they're going to just put their hand in it. And I know that's not true, but that's what they're thinking. And because those past transgressions were broadly put out there as though they already had happened, because it's already been proven, they can't get that out of their head. So, at some point, you're going to have to prove to them that they didn't have it, you know. And one way you can do that, I heard somebody say, don't get your information out of Facebook. Well, how about, you know, I've got more comments than any questions. How about you put a page on Facebook, put that information on Facebook, so they can get the accurate information out of it. I know there's a couple of ways to get into some information, but make it easy. Make a big, hey, this is what your membership...
CityofBuckner.org.
Yeah, there's not much on there.
We can put more on there.
You should. I mean, there's a lot. I've done some research myself. I've talked to some people myself. But I know where you're going to put one, but not everybody out there is. And they don't believe that it's actually going to vote their ones into the general fund, because that turn creates people out, because they don't trust, because what they were told happened, they were proven, which was a proven, blah, 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 blah. And the other question I hear all the time, a lot of money is borrowed from the waterfront right now. They want to know, where's all the extra money coming from in the waterfront? Because there's still stuff on this, we're paying too much for our water bills. And the owner just did a lot of water bill, waterfront, they have so much money because they're paying these empty water bills.
Well, part of what we're dealing with too is an aging infrastructure here, and we have two ways of approaching it. We can either borrow the money upfront and pay it back over time, or we can try and frontload so that our debt service is reduced by getting better rates, by putting more upfront, fixing these things in pieces. Our sewer plant, which was built in, I think, nineteen eighty-two, had a thirty-year life, and so, we felt we're already ten years past in the life on that. And our Department of Natural Resources continues to change the rules. At some point, they're going to come in and tell us, we have to do something. So, we had a choice to either try and start front-running this thing and getting, hopefully, to accumulate cash and have something down so our debt service reserve and what have you is not so massive. But we don't have to borrow the debt service reserve funds and those kind of things to allow us to keep interest rates as low as possible. Or we could, you know, do like a lot of us, we just put it on MasterCard and pay it when the bill comes. But that always costs you so much more. So, while I would say, yeah, our rates, there's no doubt, everybody gets a bill, knows that, you know, you're paying probably forty bucks for water alone. But if we didn't do that, and then we had that debt, we would be paying even more. So, this is just kind of our first step towards making sure that we're getting where we go. But, you know, I mean, that's another thing, whenever Leslie asked earlier, that's one of the things we got to do too, is we got to start paying back those funds that we borrowed from. So, right now, I can't sit here and just hope what each one is, but I know we're north of a hundred thousand dollars all in across all the funds. So, and I don't think we do it all in year one, but we start making, you know, maybe we're paying ten thousand dollars each one back in that first year. So, that would be a little something towards streets, a little something towards water sewer, something towards parks, and then get that squared away. But to your question on the water, you know, the other is, it's fixing, because we were like seventeen percent loss rate on leaking water lines. So, for every hundred dollars we've taken in from Independence, it was seventeen dollars we weren't getting back from the customer. So, making sure that we get those water lines repaired and shored up our expense side, so that we, so that, like I say, because some of that extra rate, I think, was going to subsidize, when you look back on it, was subsidizing leaks. It was just running out in the ground somewhere, we couldn't find it, so we were paying for it. And then that's not good stewardship, and that's something, you know, I point fingers at anybody, but that's not a good way to run the town. And we've addressed that, and we just had quite a bit of returns done, I think, over here on Central a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago now. And it'll be interesting to see when we get our statement this month, what our, what our loss rate is. But it shouldn't be more than about four percent, and we've got to get it, definitely, we've got to get it under ten.
We have to, you know, have that information, because we really have a lot of people, you get how many of those one percent taxes you want to do that. And you might have the Don and Donald, or someone issued one of mine. So, if it's Don and Donald, they put it on the face, what's under there, then people would have that information, and then it would make a better informed decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell me, Miles, who's two-thirty, South Central. Everybody's talking about it, but the big thing is, yes, let the people know, yes, the money does go to the general fund. That's where they're really beat up with what, what happens to the money. The general fund, it all goes in there. Let them know that if we pay each of the bills out of that, it's not a free fund. There can be, anything can be done with it. I think that's a huge concern for, for the citizens. With that one percent, right now, I think our police department is somewhere around seventy percent of our budget. If we get the one percent going, that actually lowers the police department to where it's more in the sixty-six percent range of our funding, because the amount of money that's coming in, it changes that number. That's a better thing for all of the departments. And just, I really like what was just said. You can see more about the budget, what's going on. The tax is a needed item. It's definitely a needed item. It's going to do great things for our town. I understand the reason that maybe some guy, you guys are against it, you know, we all know, it's not, no secret. But while you have been against it, I'm sorry, I know you're not against it, you may be against it beyond the doubt this time, but it's on there. Hopefully, we can have the support that we need to get this thing to go the right direction. I, I know where it's came from, but I also know that educating a few people in here and letting see, letting them see what it's going to do for us, and we can do the same thing for the citizens, we can have more of that behind us also.
And I would like to speak too on the, where the money's going.
Yes.
Joe has put our budget up on the website, so you should be able to see every line item of what is, what is the general fund, what is water sewer, what is streets, and how much is going. You see both the revenue and the expense side of it, so you can look in there. You should be able to have a pretty good idea of what, every budget dollar. Now, obviously, we've had pumps break, and you have to take that and fix that on the, kind of on the fly. But, you know, for folks not knowing, if they want to know, and I realize, you know, that there's a lot more fun things than sitting there and looking at the City of Buckner's budget. But I think there's twelve, thirteen hundred line items on there. So, but you can, it should be there, and you can go through it line by line and see, and that should show you right where, where we're planning to spend the money.
And just for everybody here and people at home, could you mention about what my thoughts are?
Yes.
I'll just clarify that. So, I do think Buckner needs the one percent, right? I'll put that on the record right now. I think it, it needs it. And from talking to Alderman Ross, he, I can speak for him, I think, to say that he also thinks that Buckner needs it. Our only concerns have ever been how it's being done. That's it. So, if there's any question about, oh, Alderman Holer doesn't think we need the money, that shouldn't be out there, because I definitely think we need the money. My concern has always just been, how are we going about trying to get it? I don't think that's on the ballot for the third time, right. But, yeah, we definitely need the money, for sure.
And with the, educating the people, or you don't think that we should educate them and get them behind it and kind of go forward with it? Since it is on the ballot now, we're stuck with it.
So, and that's...
I agree. I'm going to do it a fourth time, you know. I mean, that's, you can't just keep on saying, come on, you said no last time, now do it now. And if we can educate them and let people know about it...
Yeah. And my, my battle was to not have it on the budget the third time. Once it, or had it on the ballot the third time, once it made it to the ballot the third time, my argument's over. So, I haven't said hardly, I agree, because I'm not lobbying against it. I was lobbying against it being on the ballot. Now that it's on the ballot, it's up to the people to decide. And I'll be honest, and I think we do need the money. And as far as education is concerned, the mayor said it earlier, a big part of the education, I think, is a lot of people don't trust the board that we're going to spend the money properly. I guarantee you that I can speak for myself here, where I will stand on this table, and I will scream at that camera, if this board does anything with that money that they're not supposed to. I will point, and I will yell, and I will say, is this what you got the one percent for? Because you're screwing the public right now. So, if it is a trust issue, I for one will be a heck of a watchdog to make sure that it doesn't get spent. I'll be watching for a mistake. I'll be looking for a mistake, just so I can jump on them about it. So, if it's a trust issue still, the fact that I'm on the board should help to alleviate that some for the people at home, just because I'm going to be very critical of every decision of whether or not that money's being spent properly.
I appreciate it. That's awesome. I know the people do, and that's what they want. They just need to hear that. They want to know what's going to be done going forward. Can you help a little bit, talking about how the money comes in? It goes into the general fund, it gets dispersed to the proper categories, it's not a slush fund, it has a place to go.
As I say, our budget, I think we had three thousand and some odd dollars of, quote, discretion on the budget when it was all done. On, I mean, we had over, you know, right at two million dollars total, total budget. Now that on the general fund, when you got down, I mean, if you just look at the, look at the budget and see, I mean, the, the police department is six hundred and fifty some odd thousand out of that fund, and the total of that fund is, what, eight hundred or something. So, then you've still got to pay the rest of the administrative staff, and you, there's just little, you know, buy paper and toner and pay the lights and the gas and all of that. So, I mean, it's all spoken for, and you can look. And the upshot is, is that if, for whatever reason, we don't spend all the money in one year, it rolls forward into the next year. So, for last year, I know we ended up with a couple hundred thousand dollars that we were able to wring out of the expenses, and we were able to take that. That's why when you look at that two million dollars, that's how we got to two million dollars, is because some of that was a roll forward from the nineteen budget. So, we're, I mean, yeah, I would just say, and I think we need to keep, continue to put that on there. And then, if you're following along at home, so to speak, when we do these, each, each meeting, I try to report out where we were, what our closing statement was, what our catch-on hand was for the prior, prior month. So, it'd be real easy now with the video. If you're doing it, is just to chart it and say, well, last month they had this much, and this much, we got that much. And then we try to, you know, I tried to hit the big ticket thing. So, like, when our property casualty insurance comes up, and, you know, that's thirty or forty thousand dollars. And so, well, why did, why did the fund drop? Well, we just paid our insurance premiums. And, and so, I mean, that's, I mean, but you're right. I mean, there are restricted, the funds do have some level of restriction. And I can't, I can't spend that money without the approval of the board. So, me or Joe or anyone else, I mean, it's going to take the folks in this room to happen.
So, then I, am I thinking correctly, then, if this sales tax is to pass, and our, our income grows, and our budget does grow a whole lot, but we don't have to take money from the other funds to keep sustainable into the general fund, and that's going to leave money there for the streets to be able to start repairing some of these streets? Is that not a promise that we're not going to make? Is that, is, is there going to be money there for street funds? Is there going to be money there to take care of some of these things?
Absolutely. I mean, again, if you're looking at paving every street, no, we can't do that in year one. It's only two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Well, we did a huge one on Lake City.
But, but, yeah, we, over the last two years, we've gotten Lake City now from city limit to city limit. I think, you know, one of the things that, and again, we've got an engine, we had an engineering study a few years ago, I think it was, we need to probably revisit, is looking at streets and water lines. But making sure that we're doing this systematically, so that we're fixing the water line before we fix the street. So, we'd had a situation where we had fixed the street, and then we had to cut it to put a water line through. But then, then you end up with that little dip in there forever. So, making sure that we're, we're doing this in a systematic process. But I think, you know, over Ward One, Park Street, I think especially with the traffic that we have, and the park is well, pretty well utilized. And I think, you know, the holidays come out, folks, if they come through, and we do, we're doing holiday lights, and folks, you know, so we want to have that as a, you know, because that's kind of like, Lake City Road is our front door for a lot of folks that are coming from the east, that come into our downtown. We want to make sure that those folks are going through the park or what have you, that we have a, a good access. And also, just in respect to all the folks that live over there on the north side of town, that's kind of the, that's probably our longest east-west road north of twenty-four. So, to make sure that helps facilitate. But, and then we've also, like I said... but, and then we've also, like I said earlier, as discussed, we've gotta get Hudson fixed. Uh, but that's, that's gonna probably be a two to three-year project, just based on the sheer numbers that we're looking at.
I just wanna go on the record and just say, I, I firmly agree with Alderman Holer, you got that right?
Holer.
Holer, uh, about watching where the money is being spent. Uh, I give my word as well, that the money's gonna be spent where we say it's gonna be spent. And I stand a hundred percent behind, these streets need to be repaired. It's ridiculous the way some of these streets are, and we need to do something about it. And this one percent's gonna go a long way in helping to do that.
Um, also, while we're talking about spending, uh, a lot of people I know have said in the past, um, well, you guys need to make some cuts first. Once you guys start cutting back, and then if we still need it, we started cutting back. Um, we've cut away pretty much all the factor is to cut, and there's just pretty much only muscle left to cut, which that might be coming too. Uh, but discretionary spending has really dropped to zero at this point. I mean, we, we struggle over if we're gonna spend two grand on something or not. And, you know, it's a two, two and a half million dollar budget, and we're still nitpicking on two thousand dollars or three thousand dollars. It's really dropped to zero, and if you're watching from home, week after week, you can see that we struggle over spending three grand right now. So discretionary spending has dropped, and the other concern is, okay, well, now that you get the one percent, then the financial emergency's over, and you guys can go back to spending all kinds of money. That's not the case. This one percent actually helps us not go and solve it, but it doesn't solve the emergency. The financial emergency remains, and if I'm wrong, I mean, the, we're still in a financial emergency even after the one percent. So it's not like, if we got to one percent, suddenly we can start spending like the dickens again. Cause I sat out there where, you know, years ago, where I'd see the board spend thirteen thousand, eighteen thousand without blinking an eye. Those days are gone. We are not spending a nickel, other, on anything that we have to spend it on. And even if the one percent comes along, that'll help us become more, uh, sufficient in the city. But it's still not like the happy days are coming back, where we can start spending all kinds of money, or even avoid some cuts. I mean, that one percent, there's still probably gonna be more cuts coming, even if we get the one percent. They might just not be as severe as they have to be, so.
That one percent's only ten percent of our budget, so it doesn't, yeah, it's not, well, we didn't hit the lottery.
The citizens have asked for transparency and know where it goes, and I think you all are showing that, and I appreciate it. And if they have questions, anybody watching at home, right there's the guy who called, Joe can answer questions. If anybody has, it's not just for this meeting, but they can, they can call up and ask for Joe, he's got answers. And I'm doing it, cause I'm promoting the sales tax, that's the reason I'm speaking, letting people know this. Cause we need it, and, and you guys being transparent, having this forum, that is doing the right thing with the money, is gonna go a long way, I think. We've got a good group.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey. Uh, six eleven, it's a beautiful. Um, one of the signs, talk about community development, is that something that will, I mean, what was that?
Well, I think, uh, you, you ask five people, you probably get five different answers. Uh, to me, it's to help to continue to develop our neighborhoods and look at getting businesses to locate here. I know that, I thought it sounded like it was under a kid back there somewhere. Uh, yeah, we were looking at, you know, is there something to, you know, have like a beef processing plant? Would that bring jobs here? Would that bring economic growth to the community? Uh, but also up on, uh, you know, on, on the Echo Ridge area, we're looking, or Oshay Springs, they're looking at adding additional housing units up there, so uh, creating a situation where we're respectful of the folks that are already here, we don't wanna put any extra burden, or at least, I, I will speak for me. I don't wanna, I don't want the city subsidizing a developer's project necessarily. Uh, if somebody's going to overwhelm our, our infrastructure, the sewer capacity or something, then I need that developer to, to cost that into his project and not expect every taxpayer that's already here to pay a larger burden on their private real estate tax. Uh, but on the other hand, to have a friendly environment to bring businesses here for those people who wanna bring a business to town, that we try and have it, you know, make that as friendly as possible, so that it can have jobs where we can, you know, I guess, and probably ninety plus percent of the town works somewhere other than here. Uh, and I'd like to have it where, you know, more jobs we have here, with more, more sales tax, more property tax, and our revenue comes up, and it allows us to do more things for the community as a whole.
And then, um, just so everybody can hear this out loud again, the, we were Robbie and Peter, Penny Paul, were taking out these different budgets. So this will allow us to resolve that issue and then potentially pay back those sums over a course of time.
Right.
The projected amount of the two twenty is like, this.
That was based on, because if we're getting one percent right now, that's what we collected last year, was like two hundred and twenty-seven thousand on the deal. So that's taking last year's number and doubling it to be.
That's how you know, so it could have a flow, so that might not necessarily be the amount, it could be more, it could be less.
Right.
But the idea is that we are going to use these funds to actually pay the bills that the general fund can pay them without taking from other departments.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
I don't think you're lying here.
Be careful with that part, I mean, that's a marker. Don't pull it close.
Yeah. Bill Keats, favorite in District Twenty, and this is in my district here, a couple things. I have a commercial building here in town, um, and surprisingly enough, I hate taxes, but I'll support this one. When you were looking at the budget, and you can ask Joe, I've been in his office numerous times, um, for many years now, looking at what's been going on in this town. And I can tell you that I'm very happy about this board, and I'm very happy that things are moving forward and, and progressing here. But the reality is, if you don't pass this tax, everybody listen, you're one ice storm, one natural disaster away from bankruptcy. You don't have a slush fund, you don't have a resource, and if there's a natural disaster in this, things totally out of your control that happen to this town, and people are gonna look to you to say, fix it, you don't have the resources to fix it. So you can talk about all the other stuff you wanna talk about, but the one uncontrollable thing that you don't have is that we get an ice storm, we get a windstorm, we get a tornado, we, we lose a water tower. We lose something that's critical to the infrastructure, the, the processing plant, the, uh, sewer plant finally decides to go upside down, cause it's already ten years over, you've gotta have the resources. That's just good business. I hate taxes, I hate that we're doing that, and I'm looking at this tax, it's gonna affect about ninety-five percent of people outside of this town. Cause it's a sales tax, so that's a good thing. We're gonna cycle some money from other, out of town. So I support the tax, I support what you're doing, I'm very glad about how you guys are doing it. And the transparent numbers are there, I don't have to go in and ask Joe, say, hey, where, what's going on? So very good. Secondly, can I use that data on the processing plant?
Sure, please.
Uh, we're coming up on election, and nobody wants to finance anything right now till after the election. We ran into that wall where we had finances, we got lined up, we had some other issues about licensing. But everybody, the whole banking business, the whole in financial business is shut down until after the election. I think there's so much uncertainty right now that nobody's willing to do anything. So we're on hold about what's going on. Um, we hope that we don't lose the momentum that we had going, and the investors that we had, that were looking at it. We hope we don't lose a lot of the people that are looking at doing the licensing, because you have to have a certain amount of licensing, you know, USDA licensing to come in and do all this. So all those dominoes are in a row until we got down, okay, write your check, and then everybody goes to all the finances, all the banks, everybody goes, uh, no, we're gonna do enough to that. I understand that, disappointed in that, but that's where we are right now. Haven't got it, we're still working on it, we're just on hold till we see what's gonna happen in two weeks. So that's the latest. I'm still pushing for Buckner, I love Buckner, I think it's a great little town, it's got great potential. And uh, so I'd like to see that, uh, that, that happen here, so. Any questions I can answer for you guys?
I'd just like to thank you for everything you've done so far.
I love this little town, believe me, I, I like this town. I, I, like I said, I, I really do, I think it's got a lot of potential. I see the downtown where it was. We didn't even, now you're gonna be preaching now, ten years ago, when it looked like a long town, you know, deserted town, and now you come down here. Uh, I just think that there's all sorts of potential in business, I've missed this town. And I'd like to raise the visibility, um, there's no reason we can't be a Westin or a destination place. Uh, it's just gonna take time and effort and money, uh, and people to be involved and interested in their community. And I'm glad to see we have new board members, we have new, new people active and wanting to do things and moving forward. Uh, you know, we may not agree on everything, obviously not. But that's okay, my wife and I don't, and I don't agree all the time, so I don't agree myself, so. But, uh, no, I like this town, so I'm, I'm more than that, even when I'm turned out, I'll still work for this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have an addition to that, and I've talked to you about this before. I read the argument, uh, that we should, we shouldn't need this tax because in nineteen seventy-nine, a gallon of milk was a buck ninety-nine. Well, now it's four dollars a gallon. So as that, that number's gone up, so should our revenue. Would you address that?
Well, I think when you look at a lot of the staples, like especially groceries, if you look at what the, the inflation index on that is versus what it is for, say, health insurance, and the benefits that we're paying for our, our police and our city employees, the number of things that we are, are paying, that we're paying for, outstrip the rate of the things that were kind of baked in, baked into our, our tax rate. So, and if you think about like groceries in particular, a lot of those were taxed at a lower rate. I don't know, uh, how that necessarily plays it, but, you know, I mean, and if you think about Buckner in nineteen seventy-nine, we had two car dealers. Uh, we had only Chevrolet, and we had Lancer Ford.
Forty-five hundred new.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, in my truck, like, the sticker on it was like almost sixty thousand, so I could have really, I could have bought an airplane in nineteen seventy-nine for that, so. Um, yeah, I mean, the, the pricing of stuff is all gone up, but as you look at a percentage, and sometimes you're taking a percentage of a percentage, so.
That's where I was going.
You're, you're getting a, you're not getting an equal escalation there, so. Uh, and then also, if you look at, I think in nineteen eighty-two, I think was when Hancock passed. So where we were in the past able to kind of capitalize on inflation and what the impact it had on real estate prices. Uh, right now, I think, last year, we only took a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in on real estate and personal property. So this tax is, you know, substantially, the, the sales tax is doing a lot more than our real estate taxes, so. Uh, I know when I pay my, my, uh, personal property and real estate, it's a big number, but Buckner's not getting a big number. It's the school that's getting a big chunk, it's the fire department that's a pretty good chunk, the library, and Buckner kind of on par. And so if you think about how much the city does, and I mean, I'm, I'm not taking a shot at the library, I think it's a great thing, and we need to have one, but uh, we're kind of doing it on the same budget, so it's, or at least as far as what the contribution is from each household, so. Uh, one thing I did wanna say is, uh, some people have asked me, you know, if, uh, if this thing doesn't pass, you know, is this the end for Buckner? The answer is no. Uh, on November fourth, if this doesn't go the way we hope, we're still gonna open for business on, on that morning. The lights are still gonna be on, we're still gonna be paying our bills. But some of the things we're gonna have to look at is, over time, maybe right now, you know, as soon as we know it's snowing, we're out putting on the ice melt, or we're blading, as soon as it hits the ground, maybe we're gonna have to wait until we got four inches of snow or six inches of snow. Uh, how long does it take us to turn around a building for a minute, or how long does it take us to certify a property? So some of those things, the services the city does, and all, yeah, some of those things might get slowed down. They're not gonna stop, but it may slow some things down. I just don't want people to think that, oh my God, it didn't pass, and the end is here. It, it's not, we're gonna go forward either way. I do hope the folks, uh, you know, will take the time to consider what we put forth here tonight. Uh, if you've got a friend that wasn't here tonight, and I'm gonna guess all of you do, cause I hope you all have a friend that wasn't here tonight. Ask them to, you know, spend a couple minutes watching the video and seeing what we're doing, and if in good conscience, they can give us a yes vote. We would really appreciate that. I think it's gonna go a long way to, to continue to move the city forward, and I think, you know, everybody up here is, is trying to do their best for the town, and we all come with different experiences and backgrounds, but we all want the same thing, and that's Buckner to be the best it can be.
Man.
Yes.
One other thing, uh, there are programs out there that maybe we could look at, had we had sufficient amount of money. And one thing I'd like to see us bring back is mosquito control. We've had to drop that because of the, the expense of, of the, uh, chemical that, uh, the spray and so forth, that's quite expensive, but and we've dropped that some, some few years back, and I'd like to see that be brought back again, especially around when we have the park folks over, you know, uh. Anyway, there's other things that we can do if we have the money.
So if there's no other questions, I think that we should do a adjournment.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you for coming this evening, folks.
Yeah.